Ta-da, we are on, okay. Here we are, Wednesday, July 10th, regular meeting of the Commissioners. Welcome, everyone, live and across the universe today. First up, we have got additions or deletions to the agenda.
No additions or deletions, deletions to the agenda.
Okay, that's great.
I would ask the Board to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add as item number nine, the executive session that's described on the agenda under a special meeting and then eliminate the special meeting. It's sort of a unnecessary step.
So I need a motion?
I'll move to make the executive session item number nine on our agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you for that. We've got, we're gonna open up to public comment. I don't know if, who's here today and if they have anyone, wants to get up and speak. I did wanna say, let's see, if some people are here regarding the Castle Creek Trail, I did wanna point that, let's see, we're, I'm looking at the, Gary, Gary just clued me into this, that I should announce this in case somebody's waiting to speak. Now, I have it listed as a public hearing here, Gary, what am I missing?
It's being continued.
It's being continued from and continued to August 14th.
No, that's, that's.
Wrong one.
The I G A.
Thank you. Okay, here we go, item number five. Nope, supplemental appropriations. What I wanted to say is that the public will have an opportunity to comment on the Castle Creek Trail at the next meeting. So that was, that's how I understand it. Is that right? Nobody's disagreeing with me.
I think.
But if you have comment on something else, please come up and we, we'll do three-minute comments if you can, and thanks for coming in.
Here.
Yep, have a seat, and if you tell us your name and.
My name's Valerie Braun, and I live on Rainbow Lane in Woody Creek. And I'm here today to share with the Board of County Commissioners the extreme conditions that occurred beginning the week, a week ago, Monday, July 1st, building in intensity on Tuesday, July 2nd, and continuing through Monday, July 8th. Every day during this period of time, there were hours and hours where there was never a moment without jet aircraft noise. I counted arrivals and departures three times over three days, and I believe there were more than 32 operations in an hour several times during that time period. On Friday, July 5th, my husband and I attended the six o'clock Chamber Symphony Concert at the Music Tent. Throughout the concert, there were a number of times where a low rumble was, could be heard over the incredible music being played. I thought it was someone on an unmuffled motorcycle circling the tent area. It wasn't until we left the concert at about 7:50 that I heard the noise again, a jet departure from the airport. As a member of the Aspen Vision Committee, 32 operations has been mentioned to us as the maximum number of operations per hour. However, I don't know if that is on average or a hard number during any given hour. When there are that many operations, it's impossible to have a break in the constant noise. I have timed from my deck how long a period of time I can hear one jet as it departs the airport. Depending on the kind and size of the jet, it can be anywhere from 20 to 30 seconds of noise for one jet departure. I've even done it with my back to the upper valley so that it just is, so that it's not, so that it is just perceived noise rather than visual indicator at starting time. Arrivals can often be heard well before the aircraft can be seen coming up the valley or over Triangle Peak. That noise can be even longer than 30 seconds. I started to make reports, but it became so overwhelming that I decided to bring the issue here. The Woody Creek Caucus has spent many meetings discussing the impacts of the airport on our community. We have concerns regarding noise, air pollution, and the intensity of use that we, that has led to our concern about an accident. Added in, the recreational helicopters that enter the airspace as well, which is, they're also incredibly loud, you have a huge quality of life issue. I have lived on the exact same property for 47 years. I have interacted with every airport manager slash director during that time. I have always been promised, "Don't worry, Val, the stage ones will be, go away and it'll be better. Don't worry, Val, the stage two will go away, it'll be better. Don't worry, Val, the stage three." Well, you get the point. All that has ever happened in 47 years is, the noise is louder, bigger planes have come in, and there are ever-increasing numbers of operations. When you, the Board of County Commissioners, consider the decision whether to shift the runway 80 feet to allow much bigger aircraft into our valley, you should have the confidence that you have gotten second opinion data that either confirms what your contractors provide with regard to noise and air pollution, or reveals issues that still need to be rectified. In other words, take advantage of this study time to open your minds to more information from fresh eyes. This is your opportunity to prove it, or understand what the reality is. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Thanks for preparing that. Okay, public comment still open? Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, before I introduce myself, just wanna say thank you for your public service. My name is Sarah Evans. I grew up in Rifle and Glenwood Springs, and was a founding member of Aspen Santa Fe Ballet in 1996. Upon leaving the ballet, I went to college, got my master's degree, started a family, and returned to the West Slope, and since then have had another child. I have two kids who go to Aspen Elementary School, and we settled in Woody Creek in employee housing about five years ago. My husband and I own and operate an engineering consulting firm, Woody Creek Engineering. And I'm here today as a way of reporting and kind of echoing Valerie's concerns about the air traffic and noise pollution. About a month ago, a friend of mine, also from Glenwood Springs, came up to visit, and we went on a walk down the Rio Grande Trail from my house to Jaffe Park, and we had to turn back. It was incredibly depressing, she's also from the valley. It's depressing not only because of the impact on our relation, you know, on our ability to enjoy the glory of that, of that view and that walk, but also depressing for the legacy and potential growth of where our community is going. I invite you to spend some time in that area at Jaffe Park, have a committee meeting at one of the picnic tables, take a walk down the Rio Grande Trail. It's not just a hu, a human quality of life issue, it's an environmental issue. There's no doubt that if human beings can't speak to each other, migratory birds can't speak to each other, migratory animals can't speak to each other. I'm not here just as an advocate for my personal, my, my, my personal experience, but also as an advocate for our integrity here. I'm fearful for what the, what this pollution is going to do to our way of life, what it represents to people who do bring private aircraft in kind of untethered. I, I fear for the integrity of our culture, the integrity of our, of our way of life. And I, I'm, I'm speaking here in order to protect that and as a voice for that, so thank you.
Sarah, thanks for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Valerie, I did wanna say you can submit that letter if you want to, into the record, if you wanna give a copy to.
Just email it to.
Or to Jeanette, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, public comment is open? Come on up.
My name is Lee Mulcahy, and I would like to say thank you so much for, for, to Sarah and to Val, because I think that they speak for the many residents of Burlingame Ranch. It, it's, you know, I always like to start off with a joke, but to this day, the ski company banned the song "Big Money Ruins Everything." And I love our small-town character, I love our airport, you know, being small, and I, I just think that, you know, pushing a couple hundred million or whatever it's cost, is it gonna be years of construction, and, and it will, it, you're right, Sarah, it'll change our lives, and not in a good way. But I'm also here, as you know, I'm not sure, did you, George, are you on the new APSHA?
We haven't decided yet.
Okay. So I, I understand there are five members, two will be from the city and, and one for you, you or Kelly, but I think our story, the Mulcahy eviction, is sadly the story of our nation, and that we can't come together and the, I, I won't go through anymore except to say, I just have a video of my mom speaking to city council, you know, a couple states over, recently, the Democrats and the Republicans got in a war, and I think the way forward is peace, I think the way forward is compromise to give us a public hearing. You know, I thank you, Jeanette, thank you so much for putting the 2,000 signatures from the public asking for a public hearing on the Mulcahy eviction, and with, I'll just play this. Thank you for your time.
Can you tell me how long it is?
It's a three-minute. How do I get volume?
I'm Sandy Mulcahy. This is the scripture that came to mind when I thought about tonight, about our eviction. Micah 6:8, "God has showed you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy, and walk humbly with your God." I have not observed mercy and justice in our case in Aspen. And I want to just go click, click, click through several of these. Really some egregious injustices. One, the notice of violation was sent out prematurely by APSHA, and it really skewed date deadlines, and it was against their own guidelines. Two, APSHA then covered its tracks by having a change of guidelines, always happened in January, happened in October, to line up what they had done. Three, after notifying Lee that he needed to bring in the documentation for his non-traditional work, he gathered it all up, took it in, APSHA refused to look at it. And then, kind of an unconstitutional seizure, and I wanna explain that. APSHA increased their assets, that particular piece of property was like 150,000. Lee and my husband and I increased it to almost a million dollars, yet that was not considered as part of his work. It was just our work, you know, we couldn't afford to have contractors, so we did the work ourselves. And you know, it was a hardship on my husband. He was dealing with cancer, and he and Lee would drive in from Rude Eye Shores, spend 14 to 16 hours on the job. He ended up in the ER, they thought maybe it had a stroke. So blood, sweat, tears, emotions, all kinds of things have been involved in that Burlingame property. And then, five, the law required Judge Seldon to have a case management conference. He did not do that. The law was disobeyed, and that's, you can find that easily. Six, 2,000 signatures were brought in from the public asking for a public hearing, and yet that has never been considered. And let me talk about Texas and mercy, because we really didn't experience any mercy in Aspen. This is what was going on in the very same timeframe. Lee arrived at M.D. Anderson, Bud died two days later. We had been there for months, so we had to pack up, get all those things, and head back to Arlington. I made funeral arrangements on my cellphone. We arrived, my home had been flooded. It took them six months, contractors, and just an unbelievable mess. The day that we had the funeral, not the funeral, but the memorial service at the plot, the farm went on the market, and we had 35 years of equipment that had to be figured out what it was and advertised, and then meet the buyers two hours away to get all that taken care of. You know, 56 years of marriage, you cannot imagine the decisions that I was faced with, and I relied heavily on Lee. We also had a trip to Kenya, where we had to execute that.
With three minutes?
And all of that within that timeframe that was going on in Aspen. I don't know if you've ever dealt with that kind of emotion, where you are just stressed beyond belief, and yet, no mercy, absolutely no mercy whatsoever. And so, what can I say to you? If you can fathom dealing with all of those things, and then you have this situation in Aspen, and you are asking for consideration, but you're not getting it. We go back to that scripture, because it says, "What does the Lord require of you? To act justly, to love mercy." Aspen, you're guilty. We experienced none of that. You know, will I leave? No, I will not. And if it means eviction, and APSHA required or asked for a swap team.
Hey, Lee, we're pretty much over time now.
Are you ready for that? I am. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Thank you, sorry for running over.
Thank your mom also for us. Thank your mom for speaking to the city council.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Comment.
I'm good today.
No, I don't have anything today.
I don't either, so we're gonna keep going. We need a motion, consent items are up next, single reading, minutes of regular meeting of June 26th.
I'll move to approve the, those amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we're gonna do ratification of hearing officers, determinations of abatement petitions for the property tax refund, and Julia is here. Come on up, or shoot. Or you could stay there, I guess, you don't have, but it's up to you. Oh, why not?
Larry, you wanna come up?
Thanks for coming in. This is your first time before us, right?
Yeah.
Excellent, thanks for coming, this is great.
Yeah, it's fun.
Got any tough questions? All right, you two, let's do it.
So I, I mean, I have some questions, and I don't know if you're gonna do a presentation, but.
I think this was on consent agenda, so there was not a presentation prepared.
Yeah.
Answer questions. You're here to answer questions, okay. Then we'll go rate the questions.
So, so a couple of questions. One, there's this, these three cases that are pending decision by the, by a judge, having to do with adjacently owned parcels of land. Is there any insight about when that, that decision will be made, and?
My understanding is that the, I'm laryphied with the county assessor's office. My understanding is that the court, the Supreme Court cases, that these are basically being put on hold, pending, should be sometime fairly soon. I think they're submitting documentation, and I don't know when the oral arguments are going to be made, but my understanding that it's, it should be fairly soon, this summer, and then how long it takes for them to render a decision is kind of an open-ended question.
And then I gather from our packet that once the decision is made in the court, that these people making the, the appeals for abatement might come back and re, refile their things depending on how the court case is decided?
That's correct. Over the course of the last couple of years, there have been numerous other examples of these appeals for vacant land adjacent to a residence where they're trying to get the residential classification, and the idea is that the Supreme Court decision will set a precedent that should give us guidance as to how to determine these, these appeals that have been put on hold.
And then, the one case on Redstone Boulevard, where the people own lots on opposite sides of the road from each other, depending on the status of Redstone Boulevard, I would take it to mean those are two completely, they're not contiguous parcels, 'cause they're separated by the county road.
That was exactly our, our recommendation on that, and by virtue of the fact that they don't physically touch, it's, we felt that it didn't meet the definition of residential land, because it wasn't contiguous and under common use, you know, with the, with the adjacent residence. But again, that's one of the, one of the examples, I think that hopefully will be clarified with the, the decisions made.
So there's a similar case pending where it's something across the road from each other.
Yeah, one of the ones from, in, before the Supreme Court, or, or an example of ones that have gone before us is, for example, somebody that owns a lot and then is separated by the vacant lot by common area open space, while it's close and it's, you know, just across the way, but is it technically, you know, adjacent and used in conjunction? And, and so I think, again, hopefully that will be one of the things that gets clarified by the Supreme Court.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions.
George?
No.
I don't have any questions either.
I'd make a motion to approve the ratification of hearing officers, determinations of abatement petitions for property tax refund.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks for coming in. Well done.
That's most of our packet right there.
Yeah, it is. Okay, up next, we have a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners appointing Pittkin County Commissioner Representatives to the Aspen-Pittkin Housing Authority, APSHA Board. And Charlotte's not here, but Jillian is.
So this was a direction that was given at a previous work session. As you are aware, the I G A was amended with the city of Aspen that creates APSHA. Part of that amendment was restructuring the APSHA Board. The APSHA Board restructure includes a representative from the Board of County Commissioners to sit as a voting member, and a representative from the Board of County Commissioners to sit as an alternate. Similarly, there's a city council representatives, one voting member, one alternate, and then three community members, voting members, and, and one alternate, and you did interviews for those last night. So what this resolution does is appoint the voting member, which would be George Newman, and the alternate, which would be Kelly McNichols Curry, as the Board's representatives on the newly-formed APSHA Board, which will take effect August 1st.
Got it, so we wanna make a campaign speech, George?
No. I'd be happy to hear any of the candidates, though.
All ye who may have a concern about this, speak now.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution appointing our representatives on the APSHA Board.
I can second that, can I?
Yeah.
Avoid George, the, the need. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, congratulations, and thank you for your service. This is going to be an interesting board, and the, there's a lot of pressure and a lot of publicity around it, so thank you for taking that on.
You mean I had to mind my Ps and Qs?
No, I, I don't want you to change a thing, you're doing, you'll be fine. I'm glad it's you and not me right now, but maybe you can train me. Approval of a new ambulance permit for the Roaring Fork Fire, did we vote? Did I say all in favor? I did.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure. New ambulance permit for Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority, and Jeanette, and we have a guest here today.
Yes, we do.
Good afternoon, I'm Chief Corinna, this is Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority, just here to answer any questions you have regarding the requested ambulance permit.
Excellent, thank you. I don't have any questions for you, I think we're.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, you replaced an ambulance, which, did the ambulance, was it becoming obsolete? And how, where, where did it go from here? Is somebody else able to make use of the one that we got rid of?
Yeah, so we replaced a 2005 ambulance that was basically reaching the end of its useful life, that was actually sold to Grand Lake Fire, and we replaced it with a new 2019 ambulance with a lot of upgraded safety features, and that was a grant-funded ambulance, so we received about $107,000 from the state EMTS provider grant to partially pay for that ambulance.
Mm-hmm. Great, well done. Thank your grant writer, was that you?
That was me.
All right, thank you, thanks for, you know, grant writers keep us all going.
No. Now, I've, I've one more question. We, we're building the new ambulance building here by the hospital because the new ambulances are bigger than the old ones and they needed more room even to fit them in easily.
Yeah.
And with this new one, do you have plenty of room in, in indoor parking for it?
Definitely, yeah, the, the newer ambulances are certainly bigger. Um, the boxes are bigger, so they're longer, they're taller, um, the chassis are different because of the required, um, GVWRs that we have to build the ambulances on, but all of our stations can handle all of the ambulances.
Plenty, they have plenty of room.
Yeah, plenty large enough.
I hope we don't run into that problem again of having to enlarge buildings.
To enlarge a day, yeah. No, we shouldn't have that problem with the Roaring Fork stations.
Okay. George, questions?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, new ambulance permit for the Roaring Fork Fire Rescue Authority.
I'm glad to second that.
All in favor? Aye. Great, thanks for coming down.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
I'll scan and email you.
What color is it?
It's, uh, red, gray, and black. It's our new color scheme.
That was important.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough decision.
I think you got it right. Okay, uh, up individual consideration items, uh, first reading set for public hearing on July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Uh, resolution providing supplemental appropriations to the twenty nineteen budget and amending the twenty nineteen budget, uh, for courthouse renovation, Castle Creek Trail Youth Zone. And we have Connie here and maybe some others. Welcome Connie.
Good afternoon, Connie Baker, Picken County Budget Director. And, uh, just a minute, I'll scroll down here. So, um, this budget resolution is coming to out of cycle. Uh, we just finished up our second quarter budget supplemental requests, uh, two weeks ago. But the reason for this is that there were two large projects, uh, that were just not ready, the numbers were not, uh, nailed down enough to bring to you in the normal cycle. And waiting for third quarter requests would just push off these projects too long. Uh, the delay could cause a further increase in costs, so that's why they're being brought to you at this time. Um, then at the same time, there was another request that came up from, uh, from you, from the Board of Commissioners, to fund, uh, a youth zone contribution for their capital campaign for twenty-five thousand dollars. So we went ahead and just added that into this resolution.
Great, thank you for doing that and wanted to, uh, clarify, so this is a, a grant, we're making a youth zone. We've talked about, uh, making it a challenge grant to see if we can get other municipalities or counties to participate. Um, and I wanted to ask, 'cause I couldn't remember, how long we've been contributing to youth zone through our Healthy Community Fund? And how much? 'Cause I, it came up at the last meeting and I was, that's something I wanna find out.
I know how much was a little over two hundred thousand, but I think about two thirty-eight, two hundred thirty-eight thousand rings a bell.
Sounds right.
It was, that was over the full-time that they've had partnerships, so we need to go back and, and get this specific.
Right, we'll work on, we'll work on that, but thank you, I appreciate you bringing it forward.
And, uh, should we do courthouse first? Rich, are you going to speak for Jody?
Sure, answer any questions in the house.
So the courthouse supplemental request, uh, was brought to you last week at your work session and Jody was here, um, to talk about the different parts of it. But, uh, just to review briefly for the supplemental request, it does increase the cost of the project, uh, by nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so we're, we're up to a total cost in twenty nineteen of five point five million. Uh, there was also a small amount spent in the previous year. Uh, some of this additional cost is being offset by delaying a number of projects until twenty twenty. And so we do see some expenditure reductions also at the same time.
Now, is that expenditure reduction just for twenty nineteen?
Just for twenty nineteen, yes. Um, the jail remodel study and the Emma, um, uh, River Park Plaza, or River Park Center, uh, those are just being delayed by one year. Uh, it just gives us more room in the capital fund, uh, until more revenue can come in.
I wanted to point out also in this, if we could, just, uh, this is a mandated project from the state, um, as directed by the court, I understand. So some, a good percentage of this is something we don't have much choice in, is that correct?
It's not, it's not directed by, by the court. Um, we are, it is an unfunded mandate from the state that we provide, um, uh, courthouse, uh, facilities and the, um, Judicial District will provide, uh, funding for certain, uh, things like furnishings, um, are covered by, uh, the state. Um, there are some grants, we're obviously disappointed with one of those grants, uh, for, for security to help counties offset the costs. Um, and, you know, the, the courthouse facilities, because of the nature of the work that's done in the courts, Greg, and, and maybe this is what you're getting at, do you have different requirements, uh, for security and separating populations and such, um, which are a challenge, uh, particularly with a old building that wasn't designed with those requirements in mind? Um, and that we're trying to, um, do, do the best job we can of, of meeting, uh, those types of modern-day, um, security requirements and, and technology requirements for, for an old building and that's really what's driving the cost up.
Got it, thank you. George?
But Connie, you, uh, the only thing you said, we're, we're delaying, you mentioned the Emma Riverside Park, uh, on, on the, uh, list here is the Emma Basalt Mechanical.
Right.
It's one, two, three Emma Road, it's the facility. Um, so it's the, it's called the River...
River Park Center.
River Park Center is actually our, what we affectionately call our stubbies building, yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks. I was confused.
Sorry about the naming mix-up there. So we do have some reduced costs. Uh, then there are also adjustments to grants. Uh, as John mentioned, the courthouse security grant was awarded far lower than what we were hoping and, uh, the core grant is looking unlikely. Uh, but there is, um, some grounds to believe that we could be awarded a DOLA grant. Uh, so we're switching around budget money for the grants. Uh, we're also recognizing this additional sales tax money that we have received from January through April in the general fund. That's, uh, two hundred and forty thousand dollars above and beyond budget and so we are using that to offset part of this cost.
And we actually just got our new sales tax numbers in today and that's gone up to...
May was also good. We're currently up thirteen point seven percent, uh, year-to-date over last year, so sales tax is coming in strong. Uh, we're then transferring money from the general fund to the capital fund, uh, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Uh, so all of this put together, a, a number of different moving parts, but the effect is that there's a zero change on the capital fund, so we're not using any additional fund balance in the capital fund, but we are using an additional four hundred and twenty-seven thousand in the general fund. Uh, again, with the sales tax, we only recognized the, uh, January through April additional tax that's come in. We are optimistic that we'll, we will see some, um, more revenue above and beyond what's in budget, uh, before the end of the year. And that, along with other operational savings, that the general fund will still be in a good position financially despite this increased transfer.
Can, can you, uh, predict or, or, you know, estimate a, uh, an increased fund balance from tax revenue for July and August following a typical pattern and maybe part of December? Or is it, is it too hard to tell?
You know, we, we don't get our sales tax until two months after, uh, so we won't know July sales tax until September. Uh, so we're always two months behind on having actual numbers. Word of mouth is that town was busy and, uh, it should be looking good. Hard to predict. At the moment, we have been having double-digit increases month to month in, in our sales tax compared with prior year.
I know.
And just a reminder, that's not just associated with, uh, increased activity, it's an, it's associated, um, with a change in sales tax collections where...
Okay.
We are now receiving sales tax on internet sales, so that was a, a large gap. We did not project increases for that in this year's budget because we were not clear at the time how the Department of Revenue who collects our sales tax was going to be able to accomplish that and if they were going to be able, um, to accomplish that, you know, kudos to, to Department of Revenue who really has, um, done a tremendous job. So I think we're seeing, uh, an increase from that. We're also collecting sales tax on construction materials that are purchased outside the county, which is probably about ninety percent of the construction materials.
Purchased outside of the county and delivered to Picken County.
And delivered, and delivered to Picken County, um, which was another piece we were not previously collecting sales tax on, but use tax, which went to the EOTC. So we have those two changes, which are probably making up the, the bulk of the, the sales tax change in addition to, um, what we're seeing with, uh, activity, um, with our, our, um, standard retail base.
Right, if you, you could add that the marketing efforts to expand the seasons a little bit, the secret season or the shoulder seasons, as they're called, could be having some impact there, but it sounds like construction and then, uh, the online tax would be the bulk of it.
That's our guess right now. So we'll, we'll be getting more and more information. Department of Revenue is implementing new systems, um, and we're going to be getting more detailed reports about, um, sales tax source in the future, so we'll be able to give you better information on that. We just don't have that detail right now.
No, we're, we're still, um, the, the state law, I think it didn't actually go into effect until June first?
Yeah, well, it went into effect, uh, January, but they had until June first to implement, so I think what we started seeing was, um, in April and, and May going into June, you saw retailers coming on, starting to, um, collect, or DOR starting to collect those taxes. Um, June is when we, um, we, we still have to see June collection, so we're anticipating that those are gonna continue, um, to go up this year, um, as, as more and more retailers meet that deadline.
Got it. We will see, uh, we'll see an adjustment because the use tax is going to go down, right? Is that, that'll be reflected...
That will be reflected in the, in the budget for the transit sales and use tax for the EOTC, yes.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, are there any other questions about the courthouse project? More from the construction side?
We are gonna be coming to you for a resolution on the DOLA grant, uh, that is due next month, so we'll, we'll, we're working with Jeanette now on getting a resolution put together for that, but other than that. Mike, make sure it's on.
Still on, okay. Alright, uh, thank you. I think I need a motion.
Uh, well, we still have, uh, one more piece to the resolution, uh, which is the Castle Creek Trail and...
We've missed that, we've missed setting the record, George.
Gary and GR are here to talk about this.
Oh, these guys are here. Oh yeah, now I remember.
Yes. So, I'm Gary Tinnabam, I'm the director of Picken County Open Space and Trails and I'm here with GR Fielding, who's a county engineer. And in your packet, um, we've been talking to you guys over the last month that the Castle Creek Trail has been coming in, that is gonna come in over the original budget that we put in for two thousand and nineteen. And so for the county's portion, we are, we have final numbers and so the final numbers, as you can see in your packet, you know, the, the, the final numbers have come in over budget for both open space and for the Roden Bridge contribution. So the big, through the, there's, there's two big reasons why the project came in over budget. For the open space portion of the budget, um, the reality is, is when we did the final design, we found, you know, the, the base underneath the road and the shoulder was significantly, um, different than what we thought it would be and so it cannot support anything beyond where the road is today. And so that basically pushed all the impacts to the west into the hillside and by pushing the impacts in there, it's actually something the public wanted to begin with because they wanted all the impacts to be on one side of the road and not to impact the trees. And we tried in the original design to do that as much as possible. In this one, all those impacts will be to the west and we showed you that on June fourth on the retaining walls just went up. You know, and for the open space portion too, the reality is, is what we're seeing is construction costs are escalating at a pretty hefty rate and, you know, due to the fact that our amount of, uh, square footage of retaining walls went up, the actual estimate for the retaining walls came in lower than we estimated, but almost everything else in the overall construction was about ten to fifteen percent more than what we originally estimated and we tried to put a contingency in last year, it just outstripped that. So for the open space portion, you know, from what we had for budget for construction to the new, it's about four hundred thousand dollars over. That's, uh, about a seventeen percent over budget. Um, and the Roden Bridge piece, um, I can let GR speak to it, but for the most part, it was a miss in the original design and I can let GR explain, uh, where we're at now.
Uh, George, may I have a question before we...
Uh, no, GR can go first.
Go ahead.
Uh, sure, I'm GR Fielding, the county engineer. Uh, through the thirty percent design, an assumption was made that a cable net would be, it would suffice to do the rockfall mitigation and through final design and further analysis, uh, was determined that a more structurally sound, uh, mitigation would be needed. Uh, and that brings with it a pretty significantly higher cost. Um, the, there is a couple assumptions I think made about what would be able to be scaled, what the size of boulder would be and, um, yeah, it was just a, a little bit of a miss. It's also, uh, something that's a little bit new for the county, so we don't have a lot of test projects to go back and look at something like this. But, uh, this is going to prove to be, uh, a good test project moving forward to see how, uh, this sort of technology performs on our county roads.
Got it.
So, and then in this budget supplemental too, you know, what we were looking at is, you know, the, in the budget for twenty nineteen, there, the, the music school, when they went through their land use application, committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the county for this Castle Creek Trail project. Originally, we were booking that fully to the open space program, but in looking at the overall costs and the overall nature of the increases, you know, one of the things that staff worked out with, you know, internally and were bringing to you guys is to split that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar between the two funds and because the, the rockfall mitigation is absolutely critical to make this whole project work. You can't not do it, you have to do it. Overall, compared to where we were on the original design back in two thousand and seven to the design today, overall, the project is so much better than that original design because it's safer. It's safer for all modes of transportation, for road bikes, for pedestrians and for motorists because the rockfall mitigation is gonna happen. So, you know, that's also one of these proposals is to reallocate the two hundred and fifty and put it into both funds. So it does reduce the overall, um, hit to the Roden Bridge Fund. Um, it does increase the hit to the Picken County Open Space Trail Fund, but overall, since the increases were not as huge for the open space piece, uh, we, you know, I'm gonna go to the Open Space Board tomorrow based on your direction and check in with them to see if they're, uh, see what their recommendation is and, um, so that's what we're proposing in there. I've checked with the music school and really truly, and I checked with the approval, the, it has to go to something that deals with the trail and that rockfall mitigation is absolutely critical to the trail, so. So those are the pieces. So, um, when you look at the overall hit to both budgets, you know, the, the fact is, is to the open space fund, you know, there's a lot of, I put in there the full cost of the project, so everyone can see the full cost of the project to date. And so the reality is with revenue that's gonna be coming in because we're control, we're, we're taking all the contributions from the city on this project and we're getting some revenue from past planning. You know, the overall hit to the open space fund is not three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, it's two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And for the, um, Roden Bridge Fund, it would be two hundred and twenty-one thousand. the road and bridge fund, it would be 221,000. That is part of, that includes the allocation for 125 for open space and 125 for the road and bridge fund. So, so what we're doing today is seeing if, what your recommendation is to move forward with this project, that, I just wanted to give you an update on the schedule. We are delayed, this is taking the time. The city, that's why you see it in there, the city is still working with the engineer, so hopefully by second reading, we'll have a final number for the city, and, because they have to go back to city council for their increase. But, you know, with the delay to the project, we're looking at finishing this as much as we can this year, letting it sit dormant over the winter. We will do, we will not have any impacts to the road over the winter. The road will be fully open and fully plowable and, and fully, you know, what you see today will most likely be out there, and then we'll get back to it as soon as the weather allows in the spring, and we're looking to finish it by early June of next year. And, and all of those costs include going into next year.
Got it. Questions?
Yeah, question, more of a comment. I certainly support utilizing the Aspen Music School's contribution of $250,000, splitting that between the open space and trails fund and the road and bridge fund. My, my question is, this is a budget supplemental, if we approve this, then the conversation with the Open Space and Trails Board tomorrow is more of an FYI, correct?
This is your appropriation authority. It's two reads, so that if the Open Space and Trails Board were to come back with a different recommendation that maybe the board would want to consider, you'd have the opportunity to make that change.
Okay, but ultimately, it's our decision how we allocate the dollars.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And so that's, the Open Space Board knows that going into this, and, and honestly, they wanted your feedback first before they would make a recommendation to see where you guys were at.
Yeah, well, it just makes a lot, a lot of sense. It's a, it's a cost that's been incurred, but the benefits are a much safer pathway, better line, line of sight, better rockfall mitigation, and frankly, Open Space and Trails Fund is a little more flexible, a little more discretionary than our road and bridge fund as well, so.
Steve?
A couple of questions. One, given that the IGA with the city is being continued till August 14th, does that IGA in any fashion affect the, the money that is being spent?
That's a good question. The reason why we're delaying it is to make sure we have the money straightened out, because when you approved it on first reading, what we, all of a sudden, these numbers started coming in a lot higher. We need the correct number in that IGA, so it will not, we, we need to finish this budget.
Okay, so this is actually delaying the IGA, not the other way around, kind of?
This is delaying because the city has to then appropriate that funding, and after they appropriate that funding, and you guys appropriate your funding, we'll come back on August 14th. You know, the reality is, is, you know, the project might have started, but we're not going to see invoices until, you know, later in August, so we'll be fine on the, on the funding fees.
Then the second question for GR, will this, the rockfall mitigation, will that, will that stabilize that whole slope and, and actually protect the structures that are up above the, on the hillside?
Not necessarily, Steve. The, what the rockfall mitigation does is it allows us to remove the existing mitigation efforts that we have, which is the Jersey Barrier, because that whole alignment is shifting to that side of the road. What it does is it, is it retains the rock as it falls, and then it will shed into the ditch line, which will make it a material that can be picked up easily by our existing equipment. So it isn't necessarily something that is stabilization as far as it is mitigation for what's happening.
Okay.
But there will be some scaling.
Yeah, there will be some scaling, and there's going to be some, that's the small section that isn't being retained. For the most part, almost this entire alignment has some sort of slope stabilization associated with it.
I wanted to ask, I just about the, the height of the rockfall mitigation, how high up that big cliff will it go?
It, it hangs from the top.
Oh, it does?
So, so it gets anchored off of the top, and then it gets draped down towards the road.
Got it. And then you said earlier regarding the, is the retaining walls, are few, fewer retaining walls then, or the cost has gone down because, and I wanted to just drill down and make sure, is the cost per square foot because we're making more and it's a quantity discount?
We got a really good rate, I mean, compared to what the estimate was, we got a very good rate on the soil nail wall, and so by getting a good rate on the soil nail wall, because they have increased in height, you know, the, originally, we were eight to 10 feet, now we're 10 to about 15 feet, and so that soil wall, the soil wall beyond that cut at the beginning pieces of it, it's not going to go, you know, 50, 60 feet up there. That's where the rock retaining will, will occur above that, and so it brings it all down along there.
Got it, great, thanks for the clarification. Okay, any other questions?
No.
We need a motion. We're ready for that one now.
So we'd make a motion to approve this resolution providing supplemental appropriations to the 2019 budget.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Connie, thank you for coming in. Gary, you sticking around or continue, to be continued too?
I hope you just continue that.
Yes, the next is an individual consideration item, public hearing, second reading, approving intergovernmental agreement with the City of Aspen, as we just discussed, for funding the Castle Creek Trail, and that is planned to be continued to August 14th, having been continued from June 26th.
Some moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We're going to move on to land use items. Land use public hearings, we have an ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners approving the Sunfire Ranch Open Space Preservation Master Plan. This is the first reading, and it's a, oh, and it's going to be continued to September 11th, 2019. So we don't open a public hearing on that today, seeing no one here. Do I have a motion?
Some moved?
Seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming down, Suzanne.
Yes, she's on it.
Okay, next land use item, action, resolution granting urban area GMQS allotments for additional floor area.
Thanks, Greg, Suzanne Wolf for Community Development. This is just sort of the administrative final step for a growth management competition, as you said, for the urban area, growth management allotments for additional floor area. There were three applications, two on Red Mountain, one for La Chamonix, the multifamily complex across from Highlands. I do want to point out, it was noted that there was an error in my resolution on the scoring by the Planning Commission for La Chamonix, it should say 15.2 points rather than 16. They were still the, the highest scoring, and I think, as we said last time, we forwarded the scores from the P and Z, there were more requests for floor area than floor area available. So the first two applicants were, are eligible for their full allotments that were requested, and the third applicant only got a portion of their allotment. So essentially, I think the total was 11,000 something square feet requested, 10,000 is granted, so the BGOs application only ended up with a portion of what they had initially So then this is, would be the, the final step in the granting of these allotments.
Could I ask you just a question, you got this one? So he, if, if that applicant did not get their full request, then their option is to wait until next year and submit again, or reduce the size of their expansion?
Right, I guess, really, they have three options, you know, if they want to build the full gross floor area, you know, again, these are Red Mountain lots, so it's their floor area, their subgrade space and their garage, right? They could opt to limit their development to the size with the, you know, of, of what they're allowed, so the 5750 by right plus the 1238. If they want to fully develop based on their allowable gross floor area, they could compete, again, in growth management. They could opt to utilize a TDR to accomplish alternatively to the allotments, or again, the third option would be just then to limit the size based on what they, what they've obtained.
Thanks for that. Okay, any questions? We've seen this before.
I don't have many questions. I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Make sure, do I need to, are we open for a public hearing, seeing nobody in the room? I'm going to close the public hearing. You've made a motion.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Usually, we spend a lot more time together. Okay, moving into open discussion. John? Only item for open discussion, we may want to wait till we have a full board. There was a request that came in from Clear Energy, actually, for sponsorship of electric, electric vehicle sales event. Other municipalities have sponsored it, but Core has also put some money into it, I understand, George, so I don't know if that's a double dip from us. I think the City of Aspen put, puts some in. Their request was for a thousand dollar sponsorship. It's a, a sales event, we can get more information on it, and potentially, we should bring it forward when there's more of you.
My question is, this is the second, I think the second or third time this event has taken place, and I think Clear has been a sponsor, have we contributed in the past?
We, well, there, there's been a Core grant that was given in the past that I guess was not given this year, but there's some other funding from Core, and so to replace that, they've asked the City of Aspen in Picken County. I understand City of Aspen has sponsored, we haven't considered it yet.
Okay. So we'll bring that back.
We can bring it back when there's a full board.
To hear it, yeah. I'd, I'd love to see it come back, and I don't know how soon they need a decision, but let's do it soon. Steve?
I do have a question. We were actually considering last year participating in that electric car sales event, and I would consider it again this year. We didn't do anything last year, but if I did participate in that, would I then not, should I recuse myself from when we, if we come to actually voting on putting some money into this?
When you say you participate?
Actually, you know, actually possibly purchasing a car through the sales event.
Well, you might buy a car this year.
Yeah, possibly, yeah, and we're talking about it.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't know enough how the event works, so let me get a little more information.
Maybe when we find out more. I'd need to have a decision, decision on that.
Great, we'll, we'll look forward to bringing it back.
That was it.
That was it, okay. Any other open discussion?
Yesterday, we talked a little bit on the side, but we didn't talk about it at the meeting, about on the citizen board application forms that they, people fill out online, there's the whole section that have questions about the Board of Health.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that.
And I was thinking, I mean, we could just eliminate that section entirely, but we might want to make it more a generic question. Why would you want to participate on, on this board, whatever board they're applying for? But then it's, that would be sort of the questions we ask them when we're doing the interviews anyhow, so.
So that's why we haven't had it in the past. We've mostly collected, you know, we, we've assumed interest if they're applying and then collected their, their background and scheduled the interviews, and it, in the past, and not saying we have to do it this way in the future, but that's been the opportunity for the board to explore why someone's interested in participating on the board, what they might do as a, as a board member, and, and that typically is one of your first questions from, from a board member, which, which may be redundant at that point. So that's, that's why we haven't, but we could, we can obviously structure it any way that, that the board wants.
It seemed like on the APSA board, since there were so many people applying, it maybe would have been appropriate to change it to not the, the Board of Public Health, but change it to the APSA board, the same kind of questions, just to help us on weeding out the, you know, reducing the number of people to be interviewed.
Yeah, I don't think we, we anticipated having that many applicants, for sure, and, and usually we don't for, for citizen boards, and so having somebody write an answer doesn't preclude you from asking the question again in a public setting, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's nice to clear that up because everybody trips over it. Some people just fill it out and then realize maybe it's not relevant, others skip over it.
So maybe it's a test to see if they've read the instructions on it, like, like an exam.
I mean, it would be of an area of confusion for the public if they're filling out the form and all, then all of a sudden, here's all these questions about public health.
Yeah. What we should really do is put in applications for the lesser attended, you know, boards, the less popular ones, so we can trick people into signing up for them. If you don't read the form, you know, it's not our fault, right? Just a thought, probably a bad thought.
So, not sure if I've got direction from you.
Well, I think, I think it should be either generic or should pertain, they should bear the wordsmithed for a particular board that, that people are applying for, so it's, it makes it a little clearer, and it'd be good to have some of that information ahead of time, even though we can ask, it's always good to be able to look at the full application prior.
So include questions like why you're interested in being on the board and, and that sort of thing?
No, I'm sorry, I, I, my, my point, or to Steve's point, was the application went out with the Board of Health.
Right.
And I think that confused people, a lot of people didn't answer that because, so it should either be specifically for the board that people are applying for, and that's too difficult, yeah, make it a generic.
All right.
That would be.
Yeah, and I think it would be good to have the people think of those answers ahead of time, and write them down to clarify their own thinking, and then when we ask them the same question out loud, they'd already have thought about it some, and I think that would be helpful.
Okay, we'll look at.
Yeah, it was interesting to see just the applicants that went through yesterday who had actually written down what they were going to say to us versus the ones who didn't. Some are very good thinking on their feet, other, other of those of us aren't, and including myself, and, and it's really great to have it written down in advance, so it's good, it's good advice for anybody to get your thoughts in order in advance.
I have one more, one other thing, it's more of future agendas that I just was aware of or get apprised of, that the, we're going to see a continuation of the Aspen Ski Company Management Plan till August 14th, however, Greg is going to be out of town on the 14th, so we'll need to move that to probably the 28th of August. You let the ski company know.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, good, anything else?
With that, I would then make a motion to go into exec session for the purpose of discussion with legal counsel under CRS 24-6-4024B.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, grassroots, we're done. Thank you very much. 103, that's probably my record.